Recording in progress.
Okay, so Malcolm, I think we can begin.
Ready to go? I'll open the meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board for Tuesday, January 11th, 2020.
So Malcolm, can you raise your volume a little?
I guess I can find it. How's that?
I can hear you fine, Malcolm.
Okay. Governor Peters, March 2020 Order, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General law, Act 38, Number 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties of the right have a requirement to attend. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner. Download Zoom meeting application, go to https://zoom.us/j/98222176734. The meeting is 699-1111. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. That might be Trump's meeting in the woods. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Tom's website an audio or video recording, transcript, and other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The first item on our agenda are administrative notes, which are generally, Mr. Orwig, when anybody can comment. After that, we have two hearings. There are a lot of people here. If you want to be heard when I call you, you have to raise your hand. And if your name on the screen is not your name, you'll be called whatever name is on the screen. First, as we move through this, when we get to any planning board issues, I will first ask Robin to comment, then ask if there are anybody in the audience who would like to comment or have concerns, and then come back to each member of the board. The first item on our agenda are administrative notes, first piece being the minutes for December 21st, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll get it moved, Frank, seconds in favor.
I'm going to abstain, Malcolm.
Okay, all abstains, we're gonna.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Tim? Tim? You're muted. Malcolm, yes. So, three in favor, two abstentions. Next item on our agenda are covenants, plans, and releases. First is B 437, Pine Hills, Rycroft, sorry, release lot 11-602, and B 543, ADM Redbrook, -UA 12, release slots 4-307 and 4 through 4-311. Robin, do you have any comments on any of those? Robin?
No. Nothing in particular.
Okay, any member of the board wish to question, concern?
Ron, keep me.
Somebody like to make a motion for the.
You're muted.
Motion to approve the covenants, plans, and releases.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for, forget a second from Frank, in favor, Paul? Yes, Frank?
Yes.
Forget it.
Yes.
Tim?
Malcolm, I think we're having trouble getting Tim on the Zoom here. I can't hear him. I'm sure.
He's muted.
Oh.
There he is. I think that's a different Tim that's muted, not Tim Grandy.
Oh.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now we can hear you, Tim.
I voted yes on the minutes, and I'll vote yes on this one also.
Are you in favor of plans, covenants, and releases, Tim? All right. Two, three in favor, two abstentions. Last is Form A plans.
Malcolm? Can you?
Correct this because nobody's hearing me, and that's not how we voted, they didn't abstain.
Hey, Dave?
Robin?
Test. Test, one, two, test.
Malcolm, Tim said we're not recording his votes correctly. He can't hear us.
I know, I've paid, I've called him.
Mal- Malcolm?
Test, one, two, test, one, two, test.
Can you hear, can you hear Tim now?
No.
Nope.
I can.
Test, one, two, test.
I heard that.
Test, test, test.
Is that Tim?
Yes.
Tim, are you in favor or opposed to the covenants, plans, and releases?
In favor, the vote is yes.
And are you in favor of the administrative notes?
Yes.
Okay, we're all set, four in favor, one opposed, and each one opposed. Last one is Form A plans, A 313, Pine Hills LLC, Rycroft, map seven, eight C, lots 11170 and 11171, combined to create lot 11-604. Robin, did you have any comments on that?
The owner of the lot, 11171, is purchasing the lot next door to combine them together.
Do you have any questions from the board? Somebody like to make a motion?
No move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
In favor, forget it?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Malcolm, yes, you did. The next item on our agenda is a continued public hearing, B 622, Tupper Hill Road Modification, continued from 9/7, 9/21, 10/5, 11/9, and 11/23. The modification of a definitive subdivision with special permits for inclusionary housing and adequate facilities to create 12 duplex lots, six structures and one affordable, or to re-grant the expired special permits for inclusionary housing and adequate facilities for nine single-family lots rented under the original filing, B 622. Format for this hearing is I will have a presentation by Mr. Orwig, proponents' architect. I will ask for comments from Robin. Bring it back then to anyone in the audience who would like to comment. As I spoke before, you will have to raise your hand, not yell out and holler at me before I recognize you, and either indicate your name if it's different from the one on the screen, or I will use the one on the screen. Any questions on that? Or, Mr. Orwig?
Yes. Can you hear me? Dan Orwig here from Orwig Associates, and I'm ready to present if everybody's ready.
They're ready.
Okay. My name is Dan Orwig from Orwig Associates. I've been in Duxbury for over 40 years with an office. Have done 20 cluster subdivisions in Duxbury alone, did Mast Hill here in Plymouth, done quite a few residential and commercial projects. And we're here tonight to talk about revision to an existing special permit that we got approved a couple of years ago. And we've, we've taken the zoning change that took place, and the zoning change was go, was going to R 20 SL, and it used to be R 20 MD. And we're proposing 12 attached units in pairs, six pairs of duplexes. And we're using architecture, my, my son is an architect from Hutker Architects, and we're using some architecture that he recommended. All of the technical aspects of this proposal has been approved by engineering. There, there were two items that they weren't technical, but they're administrative really, that were out there, but all the technical issues of engineering have been approved for this project. I have a, I worked up a punch list of items of talking points that I have, that I presented to the two members that are here, and one member that came and left, but the others won't have it, and I'll go through those talking points. The plan that I'm think, I think you're looking at, I'm not sure, I have it here next to me, is, is a plan about entitled Neighborhood Improvements. Since all of the technical aspects of the project have been approved, I'm not going through those. I don't think it's necessary. So I'll go through the neighborhood improvements that we've, we're taking here. Probably more than many projects, this project undertakes significant landscape restoration of disturbed areas with plantings and ground cover. And you, the whole perimeter of the site has been reestablished, especially along Halloran's Way, and, and along Long Pond Road where we discharge into the infiltration basin. The second point is that the project reduced significant storm drainage runoff from three, for, from three abutting neighbors. We have this, this long area, whole area is off-site drainage that's coming into our filtration system. And it used to cross over Long Pond Road and go down into a low point on the southern portion of Long Pond Road. The other two areas is Lisa O'Neill is here tonight, is there's drainage towards her area is all intercepted by the, the swale and recharge areas. And then there's another property on the corner of our property, the southwest portion that is incorporated into our drainage system. So we've taken three off-site drainage areas in our, our, I've taken care of that in our drainage solution. The third area is that we are encouraging pedestrian circulation here. We have 1,200 linear feet of sidewalk, both down Tupper Hill Road and Long Pond Road, as well as a pedestrian path that goes back to, to Wicket's Lane. The fifth area is we're, the engineering department recommended installing two signs, that's these two red dots on the plan, because there's no use of fertilizers, fertilizer prohibited in this zone to protect the groundwater in this area and groundwater recharge. So we're doing that. The, the fifth thing, the, this, this project installs significant landscape buffer plant materials regarding screening, the butters on Halloran's Way and along Long Pond Road. If you notice here, this is all arborvitae and screen planting all the way up around Lisa O'Neill's property, and then all along Long Pond Road in the southeastern section of the property. The, the sixth area is that we're going to promote the use of solar for each house. And the plan, I think that's up on there, you, you don't have this, but what I've taken is I've taken these blue areas in the plan, I don't know if you can see my plan here, but on each lot, I show the, the roof area that's oriented towards southern, southeastern, or southwestern exposures for solar. And if we're trying to, we're going to encourage that for each homeowner to, to incorporate a portion of solar here, because we can do it in this particular location because of the orientation of the lots. My son and I did the first all-solar house on Saquish for the Scanlon family, so we have experience in that area. This project is also incorporating the use of architectural design similar to that of the Hardee Sands projects, which I have a picture of right here, which, this, this project won Project of the Year award for Best Architecture and Best Neighborhood Planning Concept for Moderate Price housings. We've, we've changed from the nine large single-family houses to 12 more moderate, smaller units so that it's more affordable. So we think this is a good project. We think, we think it's an improvement over the nine single-family. And I can go through the, there, there's five major planned use restrictions on this, on this that we've agreed to. There, we've reduced the, the 14, our original concept was for 14 two-family houses here, and we've reduced that to 12. Each of the six duplexes share a septic system and a well, so that two, two units are, are on one well and one septic system, and that promotes further separation from utilities, which is a positive thing. We're limited to 33 bedrooms on this project to meet Title V nitrogen loading restrictions by using advanced wastewater facilities. That's the third thing. The fourth thing is that we, as I mentioned before, we prohibited the use of fertilizers. We've incorporated that in our homeowners' association documents, as well as the signage that is recommended by engineering. And the fifth thing is that this project meets the inclusionary zoning section of the zoning bylaw providing one, by providing one affordable housing unit. And that's my, my basic presentation, we think it's a, and I'm not sure that Don, Don Coria couldn't be here tonight, but he was going to come by Zoom, and I'm not sure whether he's here or not. But that's my basic presentation, and I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. Robin?
Muted.
I'm mute, Robin.
Through this? Can you hear me through this microphone?
Yeah.
Okay. So I did know Don Coria is also on, and he would like to speak as well, as part of Dan's partner. So, Don?
Okay, thank you, Robin. I, I'd like to say just a few words about the project and amplify some of the points that Dan obviously has done. First of all, when we met with the board on June 29, we received what I believe was a very positive response at that time to go forward and develop these plans with town engineering and staff has been extremely helpful on this project, both Lee and Robin. The previous approval for the nine-unit project was in the process of getting finalized when the zoning change came about, and also a combination of reasons with COVID to try to get some sort of definitive approach on, on the build-out. That proved to be a good thing in a way, because now we believe that this project is much better than was the previous project. Now, addressing some of the issues that I recall even occurring at that time, the positive feedback in particular was being addressed by a member, Kuhn, who indicated and questioned the idea about the target market for the ultimate retail housing. And I think that we mentioned at the time was going to be targeted at first-time house buyers or second-time house buyers, maybe a single-parent homes, and also on the other end of the spectrum, they're retired. We've taken a, as Dan said, a three-to-four-bedroom project, and we've made it a two-to-three-bedroom project. And as a result, we feel strongly that the issues that are normally occurring when some additional density appears on paper, that there really isn't any new net density here. Because of the size of the units is most likely that, most likely that the families that occupy these units, if there are even families per se, will have fewer children, less impact on municipal services, less automobiles, no greater amount of traffic because of the scaled-down version of the usage. And, and as a result. I'm not sure what that background is. And, and as a result, effectively produces no additional net density in terms of what normally is looked at as such. At that time, we had a discussion with Representative Kuhn about, well, what did, what did I think would be a target differential between the nine-unit project and the 14-unit project? And I have since contacted a local broker who's very well-regarded and active, and I can mention his name if you like, but he has given me a bunch of valuations based on comparable housing, and there is a significant difference between the two-to-three-bedroom unit and the three-to-four-bedroom unit in terms of ultimate pricing. I said at the June 29 meeting that just off the top of my head, without any research at the time, I thought that differential might be as much as 30%, and I believe that that is a fairly accurate number. Everyone is aware on this board about how astronomical prices are in the real estate market in the last two years, and so there really is an absence of the middle-range pricing anywhere. And so we hope that this would fill a void that would accommodate affordability in the broader sense of the term to make something manageable. And target pricing on this is yet to be kind of determined, that's really up to the ultimate build-out, but I think that things are such that it would be about a 25% to 30% differential on the ultimate retail, retail pricing. Of course, the fact that it's new construction is, and the location is, is beautiful, it's high, dry, I think that answers the value, but on the other hand, gives a homeowner a much better quality of housing and a much nicer community. The, the 14 units do create a community, there's no doubt about it. It'll have its own community, a homeowners' association. In fact, as the board members may recall, and as Robin and Ed Lee are aware, the homeowners' association is already on file in the registry from the first project, and it'll take just a little bit of tweaking to make it accommodating for the 14 unit. So we worked very hard on this project, Dan has worked significantly trying to resolve all the issues. That's one reason it's taken kind of so long to come to the table, but here we are, and we feel that we would like to have the, the board acknowledge that this is a excellent project and that it really deserves the approval of the board.
Thank you. I will now bring it back to Robin for her comments.
Thing that you'll be voting on, one is for the special permit to reinstate the inclusionary housing. Back in 2018, the special permit was approved, it did lapse in the two years, but they are requesting that inclusionary housing special permit again so that they're able to build an affordable housing unit within this development. If you don't vote to reinstate the special permit for inclusionary housing, they would be allowed to go forward and build the subdivision without an affordable unit, so to be aware of that. The existing definitive subdivision that is valid still on this project is the single-family nine-unit subdivision plan. They've come before you requesting a modification to that definitive subdivision plan to increase the density by three units to do this duplex, two-family housing development. So that's basically the difference from the original definitive plan that is still valid, and the modification they're requesting to increase the density by three units. So that's the, the two votes tonight before you. And as Dan mentioned, a lot of the things that he has mentioned and incorporated into the plan were incorporated into the original plan, and he's been just updating it based on comments from engineering and any further technical requirements that the engineering and fire had required. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on this, aside from the board?
Malcolm, you need to speak up.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on this project, aside from the board members?
Malcolm, Lisa is here. And would like to speak, Lisa?
Can't see everybody, so I don't. Lisa?
Hi. Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, Lisa O'Neill, and I reside at 15 Halloran's Way, and I've been along with the process with Dan, learning about this new neighborhood from its inception. So being a Realtor here in Plymouth, Kenland Grover, now Compass, I totally recognize the need for additional housing and appreciate that, and would like to support you in every way. However, I am here as an abutter and a homeowner, so I have some different concerns. I have really some, like, three, three major concerns. One is being the placement of the septic. The second is the buffer, and the third is the integrity of the neighborhood. With the placement of the septic, my well, so you have the hill and you have your neighborhood. My well sits, as you know, at the very, very bottom. So you've increased the homeowners from nine properties to double, thirty-three bedrooms. So the natural drainage of the water is gonna go, my septic or my well is right at the base of that. So I want to know, my concern is the quality and the quantity of my well water. And if something happens to my well water, and are you gonna be responsible to repair that? I'm just not sure how it works. Sure. Sure.
Is there any question?
No.
Let her ask, all.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, you know, also I want to know where your well system is going to be. I know you're collaborating, you know, two per home, but, you know, whereabouts is it gonna sit? Because it's a high hill. So, um, and the other is the buffer we talked about initially about a year and a half ago. To just bring you up to speed, if you remember, my house is sitting low and it's a very high hill. So if you have your houses all along that hill, if you clear all those trees, that person, all those nine houses are gonna be literally looking down onto my very large deck and into my bedroom and bathroom. And it's gonna be, I'm gonna be like in a fishbowl. So I do have a request. I did some, there's a little nice twine up in the woods. If you could keep a buffer of the hardwoods. I'm not sure what you plan on developing. It's a, it's a very steep hill. I don't think you're gonna be building the houses on the hill. I think you're gonna be building them on the top of the hill. But my request is to leave a 60-foot buffer of trees. They're hardwoods and pines. And as you know, your whole division literally encapsulates visually my whole yard, the side yard, the backyard, and, you know, the side of my house. So it's the whole. So I'm just requesting that if you are not gonna be building on the hill, which I, hopefully you're not, that you would maintain a 60-foot buffer of trees to create, just a visual, it's gonna be everyone's back of their house and they're, they're looking out. So I'm sure they don't want to look out at an empty naked hill and then staring at my house. So I'm sure they would prefer to look at trees, so that's my request. I know in the past you talked about a berm and then putting arbor verdes. However, putting a row of arbor verdes along, unless you have irrigation, they're gonna die. And it's just, it's gonna be useless. So to use the existing hardwoods, I think that would be beneficial. And thirdly, is the integrity of the neighborhood. I know initially it was gonna be nine homes. Now it's 18 affordable homes. Twelve, okay. And I think there was a question where there wasn't enough time, enough space for the fire trucks to turn around and the cul-de-sac. And there was, there was not gonna be enough space for the homes initially in the livable space. So I just wondered, you know, if there's any variances or anything that you've put in place that is, you know, mobile homes and extra cars and garages and sheds, you know? I'm just curious what actually I'm gonna be looking at in the back of everyone's house. So that's what I'm talking about, integrity, essentially.
Okay.
Before he answers the question, could you point on the map where your home is, please?
My house is right there.
Thank you.
And it's
That's where your home is. Thank you.
Yep.
So if you could answer some of those questions, please.
I have three questions. I will. The first question was, was about proximity to her house. We have a whole open space lot next to your house. You know, there's 80 feet or 100 feet of vegetation here. You know, this is substantial. We're behind, if you could. Okay. So we've spent a lot of time working on this whole buffer here, intercepting. Now the drainage comes down and onto her property, we intercept all of that. We're not talking about affordable housing. This is moderate housing. And we're using some of the best architecture in the country here. This is not cheap. I think you have an idea that this is inexpensive, cheap housing, like mobile homes. That isn't even close to what we're presenting. So we, we have your buffer here. And, and we've always, in the prior plan with the nine lots, we had this as open space. And met with Lee and Robin down at your house and worked out with, with Lee and Robin how, just how we were gonna do this. So that has always been our plan. I, I thought you understood that, but maybe you didn't. But in any case, the whole buffer is there. The roadway itself for Tupper Hill Lane has never changed in this proposal compared to the other proposal. The fire trucks can still turn around. There's, and this has all technically been approved by the engineering. The, this, we have now six wells versus nine wells. So they're further apart. We have six septic systems versus nine septic systems. So those are further apart. We're using advanced wastewater septic systems that eliminate all the nitrates that go in the ground. So it's, we're using the best technology that is available on this, on this project. So we, and engineering has approved this. So the separation is for, there isn't anything within over 100 feet from your well to any septic system that we have. That's a state law. So we had to locate your well, locate it, and, and adjust ours accordingly. So we have met all of those criteria. If I would have known you had any concerns, I would have met with you privately beforehand and gone through where each well is, where each septic system was. You know, we have done that. And we have, we have really good separation. So that's my answer.
Okay. Do you have any further questions for the gentleman?
I do. I don't see that.
Can you step, gotta step up to the microphone, please? I know Malcolm probably say the same thing if he was here. And please ask a different question and don't reply to the
Thank you.
comments that he made.
I don't understand when we talk, when he talks about a buffer is an open space. Directly behind my house, the grass ends, and that's where his right of ownership starts. So does the buffer start the open space right there? Are they gonna be clearing all those trees? Or are they gonna keep some trees and have open space somewhere else? I'm not
Okay, so I think during the rest of this, the planning board members will be asking that exact question. And I have it written down here too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like me to address that further now?
Oh, I think, oh, the chairman's up there though, so I can't. Malcolm, you got it, man.
Are you done? Are you gonna, or do you wanna run?
I can't, I still can't hear him.
Malcolm, we can't hear you. You need to speak up.
If my voice wasn't loud enough?
There it goes.
So it's not me, it's the system.
Robin, can you hear me?
I can hear you quite well.
No, but can Robin hear me?
I don't know.
Robin, can you hear me? Because first of all, I don't know, Tim, can you hear me? Because we cannot see the speaker. It's blanked out. So I'd like you to ask PAC TV to put the speaker back on our monitors. We can't see the podium.
Was that your only question, Brigitta?
Well, I'd like to be able to see the speaker, and I'd also like PAC TV to adjust your volume and my volume so that those in the great hall can hear us.
Bridgette, I can hear you very well.
I know, but we're both on Zoom.
I'm having difficulty making out what Malcolm is saying. I hear Tim clearly. That's all I wanted to say.
Does Tim hear you?
Tim, can you hear me?
I hear you fine.
Yes.
Okay.
We can hear everybody. Malcolm needs to speak up. Your speaker, Malcolm, is not working as well.
Hmm.
I'm yelling.
Yeah. It's that computer speaker.
Are there any other questions with regards to this project for Mr. Orwell?
I think, Malcolm, can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Melissa Ferretti from the Herring Pond, Wolf, Noth Drive is online. I'm not sure if she can hear what's going on. I know she may.
Melissa, you're muted.
Yes, I know, I know. I'm actually trying to catch up on all of this. I think, you know, more or less for me, this is the property that is over in the Great Lot area. So I'm just, I'm kind of listening in. And I'm just trying to learn a bit, a little bit more and catch up on the details of this project. As you know, the Great Lot was about 2,400 acres over there. So we certainly have a concern regarding this. And I'm just, as I said, catching up. So I'm gonna mute, do a little bit of thinking, and I'll let others go, and I may speak back up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, I'll bring it back to the board. And I'll try to address each member of the board by name. Start with Brigitta.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, everyone in the great hall can hear me. I'm trying to bring my computer a little bit closer. First, I want to thank the presenters today, both the petitioners and the abutters. I think this is a very worthwhile project, and I think it is something that we absolutely need in Plymouth, which is moderately priced homes and affordable homes. And done by a good architectural firm. I'm very familiar with Hutker, and they do excellent work all around Southern New England and beyond. And I, I think that all of the improvements that you have made throughout the time that you've been presenting to us have been well-accepted. I'm happy to see that you're working with, with solar panels. And the only thing that I would like to say is, I'm very attuned to septic systems and wells. Having been the chairman of the Board of Health, I know exactly how you've cited your septic systems and wells. I'm very familiar with the 100 feet that the state requires between the soil absorption systems and any wells. And the fact that you have decreased the number of wells from, from nine to six is very important. And the fact that you've decreased the number of septic systems from nine to six is hugely important, particularly since they're nitrogen-sparing and they're what's called innovative and alternative septic systems. There's only one thing that I would like to add, well, actually two. We have in our packet a vote of approval of the definitive subdivision plan application. And on page four of that packet, what we have on there, there is a title that's called adequate facilities. And it addresses your septic systems. And number two, in the last sentence, it says, according to the Public Health Department, this is allowed. And but must be noted on the property deeds. And I would like you to add, I would like to add that it's noted on the property deeds and complies with 310 CMR And what I just quoted is actually the Title V citations for shared septic systems. Because it speaks to the relationship between the parties that are sharing the system and their responsibilities to the system and to each other. And I want to make sure that the homeowners association takes those systems and the relationship between the parties that co-own these systems very seriously so that they're pumped on a timely basis. And so that your abutter, who has just spoken, doesn't need to have any concerns about her well. Because it's all written out in Title V. The second thing that I'd like to add is there, there is a title that says list of waivers. And I'd like to ask the question, there's a waiver, I think it's, let's see, list of waivers that has a waiver for, let's see, Dead End Street, I'm, I'm trying to find it. Here it is. The waiver of Section 410, which is a waiver to provide individual LED light posts at each driveway in place of a standard utility pole, streetlights. And I'm pretty familiar with standard utility pole, streetlights. But I think that the LED light posts at the end of each driveway give a community, particularly when they're, they're LED and they're dark sky compliant. They, they give the community the lighting in a dark sky environment that they need in order to enjoy their neighborhood to the fullest extent. So I'd like to eliminate that waiver, which is Section 410. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for this subdivision. We need it. We need this housing in Plymouth for moderately priced housing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hello?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very good development. I'm pleasantly surprised. Bridgette, I'm glad that you brought up the shared systems because I would be concerned if I was sharing this system with my neighbor. But just as long as these two people that share it understand they will share the cost of pumping it out and share the cost of electricity for the well. Very good point. I want to thank you for that. Somebody in the audience spoke about arbor verdes needing, um, a, what would you call it, a, what kind of what? Irrigation. And probably 25 years ago, I put in 20 arbor verdes going down my driveway. There is no irrigation. They're 35 feet tall right now. Malcolm, you've been here, so you, you know what they look like.
Yep.
But they don't need irrigation. They're a great buffer. They do take a while to grow, and probably the first five years, then they're gonna go up like a rock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for your presentation in your development.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My foremost concern with this proposal is that it's within the ACEC, the 4,500-acre Herring River watershed, an area of critical environmental concern. It's a state-designated area of critical environmental concern, as I understand it. And as such, this development should minimize density, provide specialized treatment of waste, water runoff, fertilizers, pesticides and such. Maintain wildlife corridors and retain a maximum amount of the naturally occurring woods and wildlands and topography. ACECs are unique in many ways, including how they are established. Quoting from the legislation, an area of critical environmental concern is a place that receives special recognition because of the quality, uniqueness, and significance of its natural and cultural resources. Such an area is identified and nominated at the community level and is reviewed and designated by the State Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. The Department of Conservation and Recreation administers the program on behalf of The Department of Conservation and Recreation administers the program on behalf of the Secretary. This area contains one of the most important anadromous, I can never pronounce it right, anodromous fisheries along the coast. The Great Herring Pond supports a regionally important freshwater recreational fishery. There's at least three state-listed rare and endangered species in this area, including the box turtle. And at present, there in the ecoregion, over 200 state-listed species. The historical and cultural resources from the Native American and colonial periods are important in this region. And, and the ACEC in this area contains the remains of what is believed to be the core habitation area of the Herring Pond Indians' Wampanoag settlement. Melissa Ferretti, I believe she is the chairlady of the Wampanoag, is on this site. The designation of an ACEC increases environmental oversight by increasing state permitting standards through elevated performance standards and lowering thresholds for review. But there are no specific regulatory impediments. That's left to the communities where ACEC are located. It's our responsibility to make, take care of this area. In Plymouth, both municipal and nonprofit and private entities have spent a great amount of money and time to try and protect this area, including funding and creating the David Alper Preserve, which is in the area. And ongoing assessments of water quality in this area have been undertaken by that group as well. I think all these things should be foremost in the minds of anyone considering development in this area. So this proposal, it does have some good qualities. It does have some, as the proponent says, some award-winning style of architecture. But it's more dense than the original one was. There's a small, but discernible effort to address environmental concerns. The designation of one open space lot in here, but I think that's basically a retention area, water retention area. I'm concerned that there's too much lawn in this. I'm concerned that the prohibition against pesticides and things like that is something that a lot of people are advised to, to follow, but it's impossible to actually enforce. Getting back to the area's sensitivity, I note that on the plan, the materials we received, they, they talk about a storm scepter, stormwater technology that is employed in this site. The company literature says it's not recommended for use in critical areas and it specifically cites ACECs. So development on both sides of Tupper, Tupper Hill are heavily wooded, hilly and have homes sited within the existing topography. So I'm concerned, I can't really tell, I'm not an engineer, but it looks to me as if most of the naturally occurring trees and things are being removed and replaced with lawn. I know we talked about arborvitae and, and shrubs in places, but the best way to protect an area is keeping the woods and wildlands that exist there. And it's a hilly wooded area and I'd like to see more of that retained. In summary, I'd like to see considerably less density, perhaps a return to the original eight or nine single-family units. An access road that winds and follows the topography, the retention of a considerable amount of trees and understory, onsite recharge and infiltration using nature-based solutions wherever possible. And conditions binding already from pesticides, fertilizers, limits on the amount of lawn for a lot, et cetera. That's my general perspective on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Tim?
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions for the presenter. Let me just discuss the buffers to the neighbors here. And you mentioned 60 feet?
Yeah. That's at least 80 to 100 feet right there. That's, that's 80 feet here. We've completed, we've completely buffered her property.
And that property, what is available there for view shed? Is it trees? Is it oak trees?
It's existing trees. And then there's where we put in this, this swale right here to recharge, that's reforestation or replanting within that area. But we're saving the tree. We're not, this is the tree line that we save, right here.
So you're not getting closer to the neighbors as far as that section?
No, we've always, we've always had this here. I think maybe Lisa didn't understand it. That if you look at the tree line here, Lisa, I mean...
I want you to talk into me right now. I'm the one who's answering, asking the question, sir.
Okay. That's, that's 100 feet right there of existing trees.
What about the other neighbors, other than the young lady who spoke?
Well, there's, we're putting in a hedge right here of arborvitae. I've planted hundreds of arborvitae and they do really well, even in dry conditions all along here. And, and we solve the drainage problem for this abutter by putting, catching, putting a catch basin right here and discharging to this subsurface area.
So are you leaving 60 feet as the young lady asked, a pristine untouched area?
More than 60.
Per her request?
60 feet or more.
You're going to abide by that?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Now, as far as the septic systems are concerned, I would agree with Brigitta. One, they're going to be installing low-nitrogen-loading septic systems to protect the groundwater.
That's right.
Six SAS systems versus nine.
Yep.
Six wells for groundwater removal versus nine. I know the project becomes a little bit more dense, but it's well-designed. And you have created less effects as far as less septic systems, in my estimation. I do have questions on the reports. I see a lot of things that were not satisfied.
There's only two areas that weren't signed off on. I don't know, Robin?
Says partially satisfied, not satisfied. There are quite a few of them. Have they all been answered?
Yes, all of them.
But, well, all of them but two. And Dan has already addressed those two. One of them was making the access maintenance easements 20-foot wide, and this plan does show that. So everything has been addressed. There's only one...
So there are a couple of small items, but they are going to be rectified and corrected?
Yes. And we have the condition that any of the final plans do address any engineering. And can I just make two clarifications while I'm up? On, on the section, on the waiver that Brigitta mentioned on Section 410, the waiver is to waive the standard of a streetlight utility pole in order to put in the individual LED lamp posts in the driveway.
That's something that we usually do when standing subdivisions, correct?
So I just want to clarify that for her. And then the other thing I do want to mention, Dan's talking about having this buffer in the open space lot. It's not totally native and natural, all, all of it, because there is a buffer of natural trees. And then there is where he's putting in the interceptor swale, he will be having to clear some there to put the swale in, and then he's revegetating. So the whole thing is not staying all natural. It's partially natural and partially...
What is, what is staying natural? Because you just told me 60 feet was going to stay pristine.
There'll be a 60-foot buffer, but we're installing this interceptor swale right here.
Okay. So how much is left that's not going to be untouched after you do the work in that section?
Uphill, up above that is 60 feet. Below that, it looks like 10 to 20 feet.
So from her property overall, is going to be 120-foot buffer?
Well, that's, I think that's about 100. I don't have a scale with me, but I think that's 100 feet. Between her house and this tree line...
From her property line?
Yep. From her property line to there is at least 100 feet.
Okay. So everything's going to be satisfied, engineering, fire department, radius turns, low-nitrogen septic systems, language in the deeds. And I'm going to also agree with anything Brigitta had just brought up, but you clarified the lighting situation already. So I don't have any other questions. I just want you to ensure that you augment any landscaping, if you would, to make your project less viewable to the neighbors.
And I'll meet with Lisa when we do that.
With her and, if you would, and come to some type of agreement, what needs to be done for her.
Yep, I will.
And the other neighbors.
I will take charge of that.
But everybody. I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Steve? Steve, President?
I see him talking, but I don't, can't hear him again.
Malcolm, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me or Steve?
I can hear Malcolm. No, we cannot.
All right. In the absence of any comments from Steve, I'll bring it to Melissa.
Thank you. Thank you, Malcolm. You know, I just think I can say, it's hard to keep track of all of the developments and the land clearing and so many solar fields going in between all of the different towns. And I think specifically for myself, as Chairwoman of the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe, I certainly can understand the need to have housing. I too am a real estate agent. But I must agree with Frank, you know, there comes a time where you have to think about the environment and all of the things that live there. So I do too feel that if we're going to move forward with this, I would hope to see that we would do the least amount that we could and think about the original plan and go back. I, I mean, it just, I can barely keep track. It's just constant. So it's hard to, to know, you know, I'm looking at the, this, this, these hearings. I'm looking at the other towns that abut this, Plymouth, Harbor, all of the towns. And it's just, it is, it is really hard to watch sometimes. So I just wanted to just begin and end with that, to take that into consideration and to think about that. It seems as if everybody's very supportive of this development and I can certainly understand the need. But at some point, we do have to consider the repercussions and such. So thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Malcolm, Steve would like to speak. Steve.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a representative of the petitioner. So recognizing some of the environmental concerns that have been raised by Mr. Mann and obviously by some of the abutters and neighborhood people, I do understand all the efforts you're making with respect to the nitrogen recovery, preventing the use of fertilizers. And at the same time, do understand Mr. Mann's comment, which is, as a developer, that's a great thing for you, but you are passing this on to an association. And so it's important that you make whatever promises you can and present those to the board in writing with respect to restrictions on use of fertilizers and changes in the various ground covers that are being used, with respect as well, limiting lawns. And make sure those are included as covenants, not just with respect to individual units, but also as part of the association. Make the association responsible for monitoring that, something that can be acted upon under Chapter 183A, if that's necessary. Including making sure that the association can have the right to take over a septic system that is not being properly maintained or a well that is not being properly maintained. So I merely bring that as a suggestion to you, as something that I think would give some greater measure of comfort to the people who do want to preserve the environment while at the same time encouraging responsible development, especially in a, as you say, mid-price housing, something that is desperately needed here. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you. And I will do that and incorporate that and meet with Robin on that issue. Thank you.
I want to bring that to the board for any further comments against final. Brigitta?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I have a lot of respect for the land and I believe that everyone on this Zoom knows that because of my activities in Plymouth. But I think at this time in Plymouth's history, that it's unconscionable for us to support nine high-priced, single-family units and begin to price out the middle class in Plymouth. And I'm not going to support that sort of thing in Plymouth. We need our middle class. We need to support our middle class. And the fact that we're actually building a subdivision, yes, we say it's increased density because we're going from nine to 12. But we forget what Mr. Correa said, that the number of people and the number of bedrooms does not necessarily actually increase. So the amount of water, the amount of septic, all of that literally stays the same. We decrease as the price. And what we do not increase is the fact that we are inviting or disinviting our middle class into Plymouth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion, please. I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make additional comment, if that's okay.
I'd like to make a motion previous to the comment, please. Motion to, motion to close the public comment section of the hearing. That does not mean we can't continue discussing it. I just want to close the public comment.
Second motion?
Brigitta, did you second?
Yes, second.
In favor, Brigitta?
Yes.
Frank?
So?
Paul?
Yes.
Tim? Tim?
Yes.
Malcolm, yes. Okay, we close the public section of the hearing and bring it back for board's action.
I'd like to take the opportunity to say something additional, a few things.
Okay.
First of all, I, I support the notion of affordable housing. I'm not sure if we heard in this presentation at all that this would truly be affordable housing, it would be more affordable. We've heard it be a discount over the prices that may have been in the previous development, but no specifics as to what that would mean. But I, I support the notion of inclusion, for inclusionary notice. And, and I think we can accomplish, as I've said on many other occasions on this board, we can accomplish both. One of the, what we're talking about here in terms of the development is not necessarily a dramatic change in the amount of units, though I would favor less. But we are hopefully talking about taking all those measures that would protect this area of critical environmental concern. The restriction on the lawns and things like that are things that are long overdue. With all due respect to the, the quality of the development and the architecture, in my opinion, only in my opinion, I will say, the notion of these, these developments of a lollipop stick with the maximum amount of lawn is not a forward-thinking architectural approach. It is going in the wrong direction. We need to protect as much of the naturally occurring woods and wildlands from shrubs as we can. And this is a specific thing we've been asked to do by the Board of Select Board and others. Essentially, it's in our master plan and our other programs. So I think it's not a major ask to get people to start thinking a little differently about each of these standard developments. I don't know why lawn and things like that are indicative of anything other than a waste of valuable carbon-sucking, naturally occurring woods and wildlands. I will say also that Mr. Hartman has asked me to develop a low-impact development process to evaluate objectively each development that comes before us. It's, it's in the final stages. We're working with developers and arborists and others on this. And it rates each one out of a potential 120 points. And for this development, they had approximately 30 points out of 120. They did have the potential of adding, they did, when they talked about solar orientation, that adds a few points to it. But things like being solar-ready, not just orientation, green roofs, retaining woods and wildlands, retaining topography, those all add points in this low-impact development matrix and they're easily done, in my opinion. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Any further? I would like to make the same argument that Frank just made with regards to solar-ready. I think all of the homes could be made solar-ready, and those that were interested in putting solar panels on could, but the wiring would be a place to do that. If you look at the details of that, it's a fairly simple, easy operation. Any further discussion? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve, deny, or close the hearing?
The hearing has already been, I'd like to close the hearing and make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept this subdivision as stated with the exception of the addition of the citation from Title V, as I read into the record, that will be noted in the Homeowners Association, because it does, well, okay, we know what it does. I'd also like to make, to add the solar-ready to the homes. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
To approve with those conditions, and Paul seconds. In favor, Paul?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes, with included in that to augment the buffer, which the proponent already agreed to, so I want language in there that includes that also.
I'll amend my vote, motion to augment the buffer, as stated by Mr. Granby.
Will you second that, Paul?
Yes.
Frank?
I'd like to amend the motion to include a [inaudible] reduction in the proposed lawns for each of the lots.
I'm not going to accept that amendment.
Isn't that a question to be put before the board?
Yep.
Well, you've already heard what my answer is to that.
I would not accept that either.
I will not support it either.
Okay, so that is, that won't go anywhere, Frank.
I hear that.
In favor of the seconded motion? [inaudible] yes, Frank?
No.
Paul, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Malcolm, yes. Subdivision is approved with said conditions. Thank you. Next item on our agenda.
Malcolm, you need to vote on the special permit for the inclusionary housing as well.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Malcolm.
Do you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And second. In favor? Frank?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Tim? Tim?
Yes.
[inaudible]?
Yes.
Malcolm, yes, unanimous. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a site plan review. Spencer Plymouth Realty LLC, N. Collins Avenue, map 101 lots 42-1, 42-9, 38, and 32H. Construct a 137,500 square foot industrial manufacturing building at the site. Stormwater and erosion control will be implemented. Grading and leveling of the site will entail earth removal of plus or minus 488,000 cubic yards from the site. Please note, the planning board previously determined that this unified complex and that applicant will seek approval of a solar installation at the site via a separate application. What I would like to do at this point is bring this over to, bring this back to Mr. Spencer and whomever to address this plan and answer or talk about our questions at the last meeting before I bring it back to the audience and the board. Is there someone here?
All right, good evening. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Carver, members of the board, my name is Bill Sims, and I appeared before you a month ago on behalf of Spencer Plymouth Realty and Northeast Traffic Control in what is a continuation tonight of that public hearing last month on the site plan review, at which time, the board requested a brief adjournment so a few additional concerns could be addressed. So what is, what's going on here? Can I be heard okay, without the squelch? Okay. It's our plan and hope tonight that the presentation be limited to those issues of concern raised at the last meeting, that we can avoid dedicating any significant time tonight on other issues raised in the past and which are clearly not relevant to these proceedings. With me tonight is Mr. Scott Spencer, his son Shay, Mr. Mike Sutton via Zoom, all from Northeast Traffic Control, and along with that group is Mr. Rich Tabazinski from Atlantic Design Engineers, the project engineer, and Mr. Rob Reifis, and Mr. Jim Miller from R2 Architecture, the project architects on this job. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Rich at this moment, so that he can address the concerns raised at the last meeting and continue our presentation. All yours, Rich.
Good evening, Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers. And I had submitted, I believe you have in your package, a letter that we had put together that outlined, one, two, three, basically four bullet points that we believe kind of summarized this, the issues that were brought up, the major issues that were brought up at the last meeting. And I just wanted to run through them briefly and give you our response, and then I'll introduce the architects on the project who had provided an additional cross-section view for your consideration. So in terms of the comments that we had heard last week, or several weeks ago, one of the items was related to potentially reducing the project size, the building size, parking to provide more buffers and a more, a smaller development. And basically, the main things that we wanted to reiterate is that the project, the building itself, and it is the same building that was previously approved several years ago by the board. It's the same footprint, same building size, and it is what is needed by the developer, the owner of the property. It is what is needed for not only his operation, but potential future affiliated operations that will be utilizing the facility. In addition to that, the buffers that we are providing with the new development are actually in excess of what was previously approved by this board. And we provided several renditions of the site plan, colored-up versions. One, sitting in front of me here today, shows that those buffers have been increased overall over what was previously approved. So we, the development footprint is what it is, it's going to stay, and as what we propose on our plans. But we did want to make, offer one suggestion, and that is a reduction in some of the parking spaces. The bylaw under the unified complex allows for us to reduce the number of spaces on this site versus what your bylaw specifically requires. Without getting into all the math, if we go to the maximum extent that the bylaw allows in terms of a reduction, just 33%, we can reduce, we can take off about nine or 10 spaces off of the project. Now, that might not seem too much, but it'll effectively allow us to install some rain gardens within the parking areas, increase some landscaped islands, and that will enhance the drainage system that was designed. And that was, again, one of the comments we heard at the last meeting, was that the drainage system, I think, was commented that it better be a good system. And we're proposing this as an improvement to what we even have designed, as a way of reducing the parking and allowing more room for some green landscaped rain gardens within the parking area. Another issue that was brought up is basically, you know, as a reduction in the earth removal from the site. So as you know from the last meeting, the main focus of our presentation was the visibility of the property or the project from Route 3, basically the gateway into Plymouth. And so with keeping the footprint and the development footprint the same, the only way to reduce the earth removal on the site is essentially to raise everything up, so that it would be more of a balanced site. Basically, that's more of what was previously approved by this board, but obviously, that does several things. It increases the height of retaining walls that are needed, it reduces the buffers that are allowed, and it also provides a project that's visible, highly visible from Route 3. So when we originally submitted our application, we had a letter that outlined the justification for the site grades at where they are. And again, we stand by that letter, and in terms of, it provides the best way of screening the project from Route 3, and allows that visibility to be very limited, along with our proposed screening. So if the concern of the board, I guess, relating to the earth removal is the potential for the site to be excavated and then just left barren and out for a number of years, the developer is basically willing to commit to having the earth removal done within a year's period, and then actually provide a bond to make sure that the project is fully constructed within three years. Those numbers, you know, we're putting out there as an offer, but, you know, those are open to negotiation, but basically, we feel that that'll give the board some assurance that the project's not going to just be a barren, open gravel pit for years and years to come. The other comments, one of the other comments were related to the effect of the drainage system, the effect of stormwater or the project on the aquifer. So we did take a look at some regional groundwater maps, looked at the DEP designations for Zone 2s and your town designated aquifer protection area. We're definitely on the outskirts of any of those areas. Groundwater from this area is flowing towards the bay, towards Plymouth Bay, and the elevations of the water table are at approximately 90. So our site, our base elevation is at elevation 130 for the basic development footprint. We have a couple basins that are excavated down maybe another five feet below that, but essentially, we have a 35 to 40-foot stratum of natural material that'll be still in place below our lowest excavated areas. So that provides plenty of filtering for any stormwater on the site before it actually reaches the groundwater table. If I recall, if we were in one of your aquifer protection areas, we would allow it to be oated within 10 feet of the groundwater. We're obviously three or four times higher than that. And in terms of the stormwater system itself, we have, the system is designed in accordance with your town's drainage guidelines. Now, that's basically this book that I'm holding up in front of you here, it's upwards of 100 pages, it's one of the most comprehensive and strict drainage guidelines that we've ever had to deal with in various towns that we've worked in before. Our design meets those regulations, it also meets the DEP standards for their stormwater management guidelines, and I think we think it not only meets them, but it exceeds some of their requirements. In terms of recharge, the project has a total of seven above-ground retention basins and four below-ground retention basins. So, and those are spread out entirely around the property, not necessarily just dumping all our stormwater into one portion or one section of it. So we're distributing our stormwater throughout the entire 16 acres of the site. And the stormwater, before it reaches those retention areas, those infiltration areas, it'll have a pretreatment system consisting of catch basins to remove oil and grit that have sumps for storage of sediment, but also, we proposed a series of first defense units. It's a proprietary structure that Mass DEP has approved, and there are several that have been installed in the town. And these are a hydrodynamic system that has a, that enhances the sediment removal. It's pretty much like a, I guess, a fancy oil-water separator, but it basically does a lot more than your typical concrete tanks with baffles. So we proposed 12 of those throughout the site as pretreatment prior to the stormwater basins, and effectively, what we've been able to do with that is exceed the some of the standards for that I mentioned earlier. TSS removal standard in your town in the DEP, even if you're in an aquifer, is 80% removal. This project will remove 93%. So we feel our stormwater system is state-of-the-art and will protect the aquifer as best as it can be. And we can enhance it now based on the fact that if we were able, allowed to reduce our parking a little bit, we can add rain gardens to that stormwater system and enhance it even further. And so that's one of the things we're offering to do. In terms of screening, that was inadequacy of the plantings and screenings, that was one of the other issues that was brought up. The revised landscape till end that was submitted with the last application, I just wanted to run some numbers by it, basically, we proposed a screening of eastern white pines. A total of 57 eastern white pines would be planted along the top of slope along Route 3, and those would have, be infilled with a total of 58 rhododendrons and 29 viburnum, totaling about 145 plants, shrubs, trees that would be planted along that stretch that would, our designer and we feel is going to provide a healthy screening of the property, and that, along with the slope coming down, will be allowed to naturalize and over time, that we feel that the, the screening when planting will be of adequate size to really protect the view shed for Route 3. What are the, so part of that proposal, I wanted to introduce the architects from R2 that did a cross-section view, which they'll present to you, which kind of shows that plant, shows those plantings and gives you an idea in sectional view what the elevations are from Route 3 to the property. So I think, Robert, you come in to introduce, I'll introduce Robert, and he'll discuss those cross-sections.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robert Reifis with R2 Architects. I wanted to kind of present some of the visual aspects of what Richard had just spoken about. As you mentioned, originally, the site proposed had an elevation of about 143, 145, I believe, in terms of what the ground level was going to be at. That site also happened to be, contain a lot of retaining walls that were built right up to the property line, which this rendering shows, if that was the case, you would see most of the site. If that was the case, you would see most of the site, this is looking south on Route 3, exit 7 here, exit 6 there, or whatever they're known as now. You would see a lot of what Scott's business is, is the barrels, signage, et cetera. They would be very prevalent. The building would be up that much higher. So after discussions, it was decided that if we could drop the site down to approximately as Rich said, a 130-foot grade and still maintain about 40 feet above the aquifer and move the building and the buffer line back, you wind up with a larger green space between the highway and the development. The building is now lower, so it's, won't be prevalent. It won't be, everybody's been comparing what it might look like to the Amazon building there in Kingston, right at the Kingston Plymouth line. We're trying to avoid that. Also with the added feature of solar panels that provide shade and covering and somewhat screening of Scott's and New England Traffic's equipment, we feel that kind of benefits the site that much better and allows for a larger buffer between the highway and the development. This also reduces the need for retaining walls that were anywhere from 10 to 18-foot, I believe, in height in some of the areas on the site by having the buffer actually slope down gradually from the highway down to where the buildable portion of the site actually happens. This is just an overview of what the site would look like, showing the larger buffer area along the highway. And the section that Richard was discussing, here's the overall site plan, reduction of it. The section now shows the highway is at this elevation at approximately 160, and that happens right here, about halfway through the length of the property, and the building down at 30 feet. So the top of the building is actually lower than the mounted buffer that they're proposing along the highway. It's also set further back from the roadway, allowing more green space between the road and lower retaining wall before the parking lot and the development happens. So to that, that's what we offer at this time.
Are you done?
I guess.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So as, as the petitioners have mentioned, they've gone through the items that were brought up from the last meeting of working together on the plan. And I think it's really now for the board to be looking at what they're offering and seeing if this is something that you feel you're comfortable with, or if you feel the gravel removal is incidental, or if you want to look at certain items such as some of these they've mentioned that they're willing to do as conditions of approval. That's pretty much where we're at for you to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the audience now if there's anyone that would like to make a comment. Please state your name and go for it.
I would like to make a comment, if I may.
Okay.
My name's Jonathan Pallone. You may have heard my name mentioned at the last hearing. I represent, I, I'm sorry, I'm an attorney with Senior and Associates PC, and I'm here representing Save the Pine Barrens. I have submitted a letter on behalf of Save the Pine Barrens to the Building Commissioner requesting enforcement of the zoning bylaw. That was based on my conclusion that there were certain errors in the grant of permits based on flaws in the application. That, that's been denied, and it may be appealed. So I just wanted to mention that upfront. But concerning this project, there's just a few points that I want to make because I don't want to take up too much of your time. We've seen this project change a lot over the time. I think it's appropriate to view this as basically two separate projects. One project involves the earth removal, and the other project involves placing this facility there, constructing the building and whatnot. What's really significant here, and that's come up in the engineers review, is that you're being asked to approve a project that's going to require an easement from Massachusetts Department of Transportation. That in turn is going to require a real estate evaluation, and that could possibly trigger a NEPA state-level review. I think that's something that's important for you to be aware of in terms of your review of this project and how you're going to proceed with your review of this project. I think it's something that needs to be carefully considered because there's a lot that's gone on in this project that has changed and has been modified and added. And I, and I think that there's some concern about what's being presented to you as the board as this project has moved along. I also understand that you have voiced concerns about the impact of groundwater, which I think is important. I think there, there needs to be attention paid to what they've done for the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan that it appears they have obtained. I'm not sure if that's something that's been shared or if you've reviewed the construction general permit. But those are things that is a self-certification process, so I certainly think it's worth consideration by this board as well in terms of what's being done there. I do also note that they've made a request to waive the soil testing requirement until after grading is complete. And I think that would be a mistake. I think you really need to understand everything that's going on at this site before any work is undertaken. You've already seen work start when it was expressly prohibited, and I think it would be best to avoid that in the future. I also understand that you would like to keep this review with this board. That was something that I heard voiced at the last hearing. There are certain benefits to having your input into what's going on here, but the critical question about whether this earth removal is incidental or not, I think it still has to be answered. In my respectful opinion, I don't see how the earth removal of this magnitude is necessary to a project to, to put a building on this land. We've heard various reasons for it, but this isn't a matter of how it's defined by Black's Law or by reference to any other materials. The simple fact is that the zoning bylaw defines what's incidental and necessary. And I think when you go through those five factors and you, and you weigh them, there are certain things that weigh in favor of it being necessary, such as it's certainly associated with the project that's being built. I think that's why they've added in the facility to this project. But it's of a scale that's so huge that it's, it's not minor, it's major. It's more significant than the building in terms of how much material's being extracted from that site. And I think that really puts it in the place of requiring a special permit from the zoning It may have been nice at some point to weigh certain alternatives. I'm not sure if that point has passed, but I know the design review guidelines point to different alternatives in terms of citing a building. I think in summary, I think that there are certain representations that are not complete. I have doubts about the completeness of the information that's been provided to you. And I think it's important that you have all that information in order to make the best decision here. So I'm urging you to refer the earth removal to the ZBA for a special permit and get clarification on the issues of the stormwater runoff based on the clearing of the site and the lack of erosion control presently on the site. And continue the hearing until you have all the information that you need in order to make a decision. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, this is Michael Sutton. I just wanted to make a statement relative to the statement that was just made by Mr. Pallino about Mass DOT and the easement. It's true that the project has applied for an easement with Mass DOT, but that is for convenience. It is not part and parcel of the project. It is not required to construct this project in any way, shape, or form. That easement is not needed for access, excuse me, and it is not needed for any grading purposes. That easement is purely for access between parcels for our own convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one? I will bring it back to the board for comments, questions, and concerns, but I will listen first to Robin.
I already, I have nothing else to offer at this point.
Thank you. Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my main concern is there's a lot that I don't know, a lot that I'm confused by, and so I have a series of questions that I hope are answered. The, I think it was Mr. Sims who said the things that aren't relevant. I find these things very relevant in that some of the problems that we encountered, the sand and gravel removal were done and need to, those, those need to be answered, why it happened and why it continued and why it stopped and all those sorts of things. So first of all, I'll say as well that I'm not sure how many board members here were part of this in 2019. I know I was. My first introduction to this was with the so-called lay-down proposal. That's what I was visiting the site for. I had been given a proposal that we were supposed to review, and because it was going to come before us, so I was monitoring the site. I wanted to see what it looked like before any work was done. I wanted to understand it a little bit better. I wanted to see it in context. So I'm not sure when Spencer and Northeast became officially involved with this site. That's one of my questions. The original design, which I'll call Design Number 1, that was reviewed by this board in 2019, was that designed with Spencer directly in mind with Northeast? I'm not sure that's the case. This large moving is dramatic increase in amount of space compared to their facility on Scopi Circle. Can someone answer that directly? Can someone answer these questions for me as I, as I put them out?
Is there anyone here capable of answering those questions?
Yeah, Scott Spencer is.
So was, the question is, first is, was Northeast involved in the beginning with this proposal that came before us, the board, in 2019? Was it designed with them in mind exclusively?
Ian and the family. And what happened is that it was too costly to do the site work. So they prolonged doing that project. They were doing it as an investment. And after a couple of years, that's when I got involved. I bought, I, hold on. I signed the PNS on 2/18. The zoning permit that they have, all I did was renew it on 6/10. I was given an extension on 6/22, and we closed on 8/16. So the proposal that was there before, I had nothing to do with it.
Okay, good. That's, so, so the design that we saw presented to the planning board in 2021, which I'll call Design Number 2, which was described as a lay-down site, what happened to that?
Withdrawn. We were, we were looking to get the project going. We were given the advice to maybe start the process to take off 100,000 yards. And at that time, we had decided that it wasn't, it was really not the time or place. I really wanted, we were looking to store some equipment there because we have all the equipment coming back during the winter. But we decided to come up with a comprehensive plan, which you see in front of you today, and withdraw that, that plan altogether. Now, as far, you had brought up another question, and I just wanted to clarify this. There was some dirt that was taken off, and that was a misunderstanding between myself and the contractor Lopes. As soon as we got the phone call from Nick, we stopped. But all the rest of the activities, Frank, that you saw down there, that was filling a hole that was at a 100 elevation to a 130 elevation. We were given permission to do so. They said as long as the dirt is not removed off the site, we were allowed to fill in that giant hole that was not a wetland. It was what you see right now in front of the, in front of the dirt, we were allowed to do so. So all that dirt that you saw moved around, that stayed on-site. Now, if I were to stay with the current, if I was to stay with what was asked of us or the current, the permit that is allowed, I would have to raise that another 47 feet. I'm sorry, another 17 feet to make it a total of 47 feet that we would have to raise. And you know you do that in compaction lifts of every two feet. I put together a good team. We looked at the site. I've lived here for 52 years. We were looking to do something great with a piece of property that laid stagnant for a long time while also keeping our business in the town of Plymouth. Because I need the space. I do have over 1,000 registered trailers, about 25,000 drums. We need the space.
But there's a big difference between the space for a lay-down and the space for 137,500 built.
The space for the, the space for the lay-down was only to start doing work. In all honesty, it was to start doing work so we can get the final product in front of you. And that's all that was. And then at that point, we decided, you know what? Don't piecemeal this thing. Just go after the full proposal.
So I think you can understand that with a lay-down facility before me, for 100,000, 100,000 to be removed, and I looked at the plans that included this building, and it didn't look to be, they didn't seem to be on the same page. It seemed to be that this was something preliminary, but we weren't involved. We didn't get the chance to site plan and review that. Then the next thing I know, there's over 100, essentially 120 truckloads. But let me go into my questions. I appreciate you being willing to talk about this. You know, just generally, the, the work that took place at the site far exceeded what most people would consider tree and stump removal. It's a tree and stump removal associated with site work, associated with it, not approving that site work. And then it began and proceeded at a very rapid pace. If, if they misunderstood you where it said no gravel removal and proceeded for three days to take the maximum of what the town would usually put a 40 truckload per, per day limit on it, and it proceeded at that rapid rate, not somebody going and looking to take a little sand out of a place to allow drilling. So the, the clear impression is that they're trying to take as much sand and gravel as they could, and it only stopped when.
Yeah, that's a bad impression. Basically, in order for you to do any work, and you notice, you just need a little bit of room. And there's only so many places in that site with a topography. If you actually looked at property and walked it, the topography is atrocious. So what they were doing was they were trying to just create themselves some room to get working on that hole. But once Nick Mayo, once Nick Mayo asked us to stop, asked them to stop, in which they were going to stop anyway because they created the room that they thought they needed, that, because they also had to mix the dirt. You know, they weren't just going to take the dirt and push it. When you have to fill the, fill it, you have to mix the dirt appropriate for the compaction that you need.
I don't mean to interject, but can we move on with the presentation and the project that we have before us and not go back in history about any violations that we have no control over? Can we concentrate on the project that's being presented to us, please?
Maybe the project is impacted.
Yeah, well, we don't want to spend, I don't want to spend an hour listening to you, listening to you, Frank, over the same things we went over at the last meeting. Can we concentrate on the project itself, please?
I really appreciate you giving me the benefit to ask as a member of the planning board. board the questions that I'm concerned with, uh, because you don't want to go over it again.
Of course I want to go over it again, Frank. But I don't want to go over it 30 times and listen to, uh, the same information that this board has already heard. So I would like to go, go move forward with this, one way or the other. Thank you.
Let me sort of interject. One, what's been done has been done. Let's look at what's got to happen to go forward. So questions along those lines, perhaps, Frank?
All right. Uh, I'll, I'll move on, uh, to some comments and, and, and things that I would like to see as conditions. Um, I, I think I was pleased to hear the general direction that some of the, uh, engineers and people from Atlantic and all spoke, um, about, uh, I'd like to see more. And, and along those lines, uh, I would like to see overall, uh, reduction in the project's impervious footprint. Um, it, it may be an impact over the previous, uh, or initial development, which, as Mr. Spencer said, wasn't, uh, created with them in mind. Um, but it's still minimal, and it's still removed all the buffer that, that was there naturally. Uh, I am definitely in favor of reducing the amount of parking. I'm, I'm not sure what the, um, the restrictions on us are. I, I heard that we could reduce 33% because it's a, uh, the, what's the term, unified, uh, project. But I'm, I'm hoping that we have more leeway there, because as I understand it, this is for, uh, um, a, a group of people, uh, that, most of the employees of Spencer are not in the office. Uh, in the future, they hope to have manufacturing there. But right now, we don't, you know, I, I, I would venture to guess that less than a dozen people work, work or worked at their Scobee facility inside there 40 hours a week. The rest are truck drivers and people on the road. That's the nature of their business. Therefore, we could reduce even more so. The parking, therefore, we could put that into green space and renew it and swales and things like that, which they seem to be willing to do. So I, I'd hope to do that. Um, um, I think at a minimum, the, the lot should have 50-foot natural buffers, say for where the lots are adjacent to the highway, where I think it should be at least 100 feet. Um, um, let's see. I'd like to place a limit of 100,000 cubic yards to be removed from the site and any additional materials left on-site, uh, and used to create the berm that Mr. McGregor was speaking about last week, or to make it additionally possible to screen the lot. Um, I think a, a time limit should be, uh, on the removal should be set, uh, and, and the bond, which they seem to agree to, um. As the disturbance to that site has already taken place, um, and the topography altered, I'd like to see, and it seems to be, uh, I'm not an expert in this or an engineer, so this, I would like, and they seem to be providing state-of-the-art recharge systems, rain gardens and the like. I'd like to maximize those. Um, I do see that presently on-site, uh, they have dug down to the water table. They may speak of the overall level being above that, but they've excavated, uh, down to the water table. There's standing water there almost every time I've been there, i- in that pit. And there's another area that looks to me to be possibly wet all the time. Um, so I'd like to see that explored, uh, through possibly the Conservation Commission, understand what the actual nature of that is, and to address it and protect it if necessary. Um. I think the planting should be, they spoke of additional plantings. I'd like to see the, uh, diameter at breast height be at least six inches for those white pines. Uh, and it, and I'd like to see the species be, as I've said in many other instances, 100% native species. Um, I'd like to see that cease and desist that, uh, we've spoken of made formal. As my understanding Massachusetts General Law requires that once you order somebody verbally to stop, you must within 48 hours follow with a written cease and dis order. I'd like to see that on record. Um, and if gravel excavation is approved, the conditions that should be applied, those found in our regulations must be strictly adhered to. And to ensure that, I would have those regulations made part of any list of conditions. Thank you.
Mr. Spencer, do you, would you like to address, uh, any of your questions and questions?
There's one comment I'd like to say that the water, there, there was no water table exposed. Um, what you saw was a large topography going down to an excavated area that was 100 at that level. Um, I've walked that site many a times, miles through that site before I purchased it. There was never a water table exposed on that property. Frank, when you were down there, it was honestly after three days of rain. Um, that was one of the questions. One of the other question, what was another question that you were looking to ask for, Frank?
Um.
Oh, I know. 100,000, 100,000 yards of dirt. With 100,000 yards of dirt, we're back to square one of the old permit, which I know the team went through. Uh, it's basically the elevated height of that building. And if that happens, um, I will not be in a position of putting a whole solar farm there to block the, um, block the, the equipment.
I will just add briefly to the board, um, that you have heard on at least two occasions from the professionals, the engineers, the architects, as to what this plan encompasses and what is involved with it. And, um, without having to readdress these same issues over and over again, you've had plans submitted, modified, resubmitted. These are the plans. The plans that are submitted are the ones that'll work for this particular structure. They cannot be mo- modified to the extent that Mr. Mann is.
Sir, there's still four of the members that have comments to make.
I understand. I'm just trying to.
You're making a summary, and we're not done yet.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that Mr. Mann's comments. So in order to construct the building and the topography as designed, um, there's not a lot of room for extensive modification. So, thank you.
Your questions, comments, questions want answered?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Paul?
Uh, Tim, go ahead.
Okay. Um, when we talk about removal of gravel here at 500,000 yards, and everybody can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay. Talking about 500,000 cubic yards, give or take, okay? You say you want to remove it in a year's timeframe. So, let's do a little calculation on 500,000 cubic yards in a 12-month timeframe. If you worked every day for 365 days, you'd be around 48 to 49 vehicle trips in that vicinity, right? 17,857 vehicle trips in a 12-month period. That's seven days a week to remove that much material off of that site. So I think that's too many vehicle trips in that particular area. So that number would have to be worked on. I heard from Atlantic Engineering that the removal is something that really needs to be done. And I saw the cross-section going down to the building, and your engineering and your firm feels that reducing the amount of material being removed from that site wouldn't work economically, feasibly, one way or another. We asked you at the last meeting to augment the landscaping along Route Three in the area. You said your presentation last time with the plantings that have been put in place is more than sufficient, rather than saying, yes, we will augment the landscaping in that area. So I'm a little bit disappointed with that. So did we or did we not look at reducing the yardage to be removed from the site? If you're trying to remove it in a one-year timeframe, I don't think you're going to be able to do that with that many vehicle trips that would be required to remove that much material from the site. Um, Mr. McGregor mentioned putting a buffer or a berm up along Route Three also. I haven't seen that in any of your plans updated or not. So I'd like to see that. I mean, yes, this is a site that needs to be developed, and I want to see this company go in here, and we need it. It's in the industrial park. But work with us a little bit, a little bit. You already said you can reduce the parking by about 10 spots and et cetera, et cetera. But I would see a little bit, I would like to see a little bit more effort on the reduction of the yardage, even if it's 50 to 100,000 yards, something, as far as I'm concerned. Use the material on the site to create the berms that Mr. McGregor suggested along Route Three. And if there are any testing that's required to see what's going on with that material on-site, I think he wouldn't have any problem doing a couple of sieve analysis tests or any testing that may need to be done before the material would be removed from the site. Again, the vehicle trips is a lot for a one-year timeframe. It's probably too much to ask of any excavation company, and again, for the community itself, to see that much material being moved that fast with that many trips, seven days a week, in a one-year timeframe. You, you, if we do remove that much material, some timeframes need to be set, dust protection. And I didn't hear anything about the gravel, possible donation to the town of Plymouth. I didn't hear anything in the presentation that related to that, that was suggested and somewhat agreed to at the last meeting. So those are my comments at this point, and I thank you for the presentation this evening. And I'm looking forward to hopefully getting this thing moved along with a little bit of work from both sides. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tim. Paul?
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mr. Grandy said a lot of what I thought was very realistic. My only concern with doing this, if we reduce the amount of gravel taken out, the building is going to come up and be seen more readily from Route Three. If we're willing to live with that, I'm fine with that. As for parking, I drove a tractor trailer for 30 years. When I pulled my car in, I parked my car, I took my truck, there was no difference in one parking from another parking. So parking to me is irrelevant. I think this is a very worthwhile project. We need it. We need the jobs in Plymouth. We need the tax revenue that comes from this. My, I want to tell you something. When I moved to Plymouth, I bought this house. My taxes were 900 a quarter. They're now almost 4,000 a quarter. When is it going to start? When, when are we going to have a balance that we can live with? I'm, I'm okay, because I get age on my side. But I would hate to be a young family that's trying to make a go of it and see their tax bill go up and up and up because we fail to put in commercial development. We, we only, we need, people need jobs, number one. And we need a good tax balance. I'm not saying level the tax between commercial and residential. I don't think that would work. But I think we need to do something for the people, not the trees. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. McGregor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, a lot has been said about this project, uh, and I'm not going to belabor many of the points that we've heard, but I did have the same question, um, regarding the 10 cent per cubic yard, which I thought we had agreed upon at our last meeting, and I don't see it written, uh, in the proposal here. And I'm hopeful, um, that it comes back, uh, and, um, is, uh, put into the proposal. I'm going to, um, put that in. I, I'd like to remind myself what we're here to vote on today. Uh, and one of those, I believe, if, if Robin will, um, basically, uh, agree, whether or not the earth removal is incidental to the project or not. That's one of our votes today. Is that correct before us today?
Yes.
Okay, because we, we've, um, heard sort of lots of discussion around that, but we are here today to vote on whether or not, um, the earth removal is incidental to the project. There's so much scope creep, uh, that I've heard as to what we're discussing, and it's not really what we're here to vote on. Uh, it's also the recommendation to the building commissioner, and so in many respects, I think that's the reason for the scope creep. The solar panels, I believe that we asked for a bond for the solar panels so that they would go above the parking, and I didn't see that. I saw a bond for the earth removal, which I do agree with, um, consistent with Mr. Grandy's arguments as to whether or not it actually can be done. Um, so I agree also with Mr. McCall if that we should scale that back and stay within the timeframe and have a reasonable schedule of earth removal within the project. And I have one other question that we haven't discussed, and that has to do with, uh, the manufacturing process. And I'm wondering if there, uh, Mr. Spencer or so can, uh, speak to this. When you begin manufacturing, will the water that you use, um, which may have some contaminants in it because you're going to be painting signs, et cetera, will that water be going into your septic systems, or will you have separate, uh, gray water, uh, processing? How are you going to handle, um, the outflow from your, uh, manufacturing process in the future? And I, but I do want to add before you even answer that, we have such little commercial space left in Plymouth, and we have, as Mr. McCall have said, such a high tax burden, particularly for those that are, are, um, trying to stay in Plymouth as mid-careerists and early-careerists, that, um, we really need to use our commercial land for what it's designed to be, which is commercial land. So with that, Mr. Spencer, can you, uh, address how the, um, the waste from your manufacturing process is going to go back into the ground or not?
Sure. Uh, so what we're, what we're going to be manufacturing is, uh, highway signs. So really, what we use is aluminum, um, uh, that we get from the manufact, we get from a manufacturer, already pre-cut, and we get, uh, materials from 3M, and we apply those. We use a lot of, uh, digital equipment to make those signs. So we make out all the signs, everything from stop signs to the big highway sign. We're going to be making the big highway signs that go over the road. Um, so there's really no waste per se that you would say that goes into our septic rather than into our scrap pile, uh, back to an aluminum yard or, uh, into the recycling.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your answer. Uh, and I just want to say for the record, and I'm going to go back to, uh, the Board of Health, because it was mentioned tonight. The standard here in Plymouth, uh, is 10 feet from groundwater, uh, for raw sewage going into our ground, 10 feet. And that can be modified to 6 feet for raw sewage going into our ground to go into a soil absorption system. So when I hear 30, 40 feet, yes, I'd like to see soil testing. I, myself, prefer soil testing after the fact because it'll give me a much better idea of, uh, what's going to be happening in the ground at the time that I'm going to be using it. But I just want to put a little perspective, uh, into this discussion, because right now in Plymouth, and I'll give you this statistic, we have 2.8 million. Plymouth, and I'll give you this statistic, we have 2.8 million gallons per day of raw sewage going into our aquifer protection zone through our septic systems into soil absorption systems or cesspools. So it'll give you a little bit of a perspective that what we're talking about here is 35 to 40 feet above the water table, which would have been very acceptable for the Board of Health and the establishment of how raw sewage enters the soil absorption system. Little bit of perspective. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Which is, given the request with respect to parking, do we have any leeway in terms of further reducing the parking requirements based upon what the petitioner says they need for parking, given that this is a manufacturing facility? Or is that hard and fast as set forth by our restrictions?
So they're proposing to reduce it down to the maximum reduction under the Unified Complex of 33%. That's what they're offering tonight. If it's anything more than that, we'd have to talk to the building commissioner to see if there's any way to do that or if it requires a special permit.
And there could be a way that appeals, and again, we need to talk to the building commissioner if he's willing to go to a further reduction provided we make some allowance for what might happen if those spaces were needed. So again, we can have that discussion with them to see how comfortable, if the planning board recommends hypothetically a 40% reduction, how the building commissioner might feel with that in light of the bylaw. And again, there might be a way to deal with it by saying, well, we'll identify some reserve spots, and if they're needed, he could ask to have them done at a later date. But we need to have that discussion with the building commissioner.
Thank you. It's just something that, given the strong desire to, A, limit every area of development on the site to maximize our green space and to protect the area, if the petitioner has a valid basis for saying, we don't need the parking. And again, parking formulas are formulas, but every business is different, and this is a manufacturing facility with a lot of space dedicated to equipment storage. I'd just like to see that we, if we're going to develop the space, we develop it as intelligently as we can for hopefully a long-term residential business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With all of that, I have one additional question. I had requested a berm along the top next to the highway. Could somebody add the planting on top of that berm? Could somebody amplify on that a little bit, let me know what the berm looks like in your design or may look like if we added more soil to it and buffered the site even a little bit more?
Hi, Malcolm. How are you? So.
Suggested here, but it's pointed out specifically.
Right now, I mean, I don't know how they say this, but right now, there is somewhat, in a certain area at the highest point of this project, there is a berm already there which goes back down to the highway. I have no problem with trying to extend that berm to cover the gaps where it's missing, all right, because there is that berm there. Now, you know that when you get further north of the project, we're at 165, berms, they come and go, so I will fill that gap because the goal is to protect that whole place from being seen. But we do drop down from a high elevation of 165. When we get to this point over here where the ramp comes up, we're only at about a 140 elevation, so we're only really dropping it down 14 feet at that point. It's just going through Mount Mesuvius, that mountain in the middle, that that's where we take most of the dirt out of. So we are looking to create, like I said, there is already a berm section right along, facing where the building is. We will look to make that consistent, the same look without it waving in and out, in and out. And Tim, I just wanted to get to the comment that you had made about taking all that dirt in one year. That was only because it was commented on the last project? That is a lot of work. But if this board was saying to me, Scott, you have one year, one way or another, I'll get it done, I'd prefer not to. I would prefer to take it over the course of two years, to tell you the truth. It's a big project. I'm looking to reinvest in this town.
Any further questions? Comments or concerns on this project? How does the board feel? A number of unanswered questions.
Chairman?
Malcolm?
Yeah?
I have one question to the developer. So before we make any type of motions, whether the fill was incidental or not, there's no way you're going to look at potentially using some of that material for the berm that Malcolm spoke of and reducing the removal in any way, shape, or form? Is that the case? And the testing that was brought up by Brigitte Kuhn?
I'll have Rich talk about the testing, but yes, we will not be trucking in dirt to create that berm. We will be sculpting the land. That 500,000 yards, if it comes out to 430,000 yards that has to come off, then that's what it's going to be. We are going to sculpt this project to be something of a pinnacle of coming into Plymouth.
I understand.
I'm not Terry Edwards, Skip Landis. This is not my business, but it's what I feel, and after using all the experts here, is the best possible way to do this project. And in fact, I'm willing to take, I mean, will I be with the dirt? I'm looking to reinvest in the project by doing the solar.
Right, I agree. Now, the testing that was brought up by Brigitte and the per yard donation to the town.
Well, in regard to the testing, I believe the question was whether or not we wanted to do soil testing?
Correct.
Well, I think there was a misunderstanding there. We're not asking for a waiver to say we don't want to do it. We're just asking, we spoke to the town engineer and just felt that we want to defer the soil testing for when the site is already at the level of...
I think that's what Brigitte Kuhn had brought up, that said she wanted to see that happen after the slate was brought.
We've, yeah, we've already committed to doing that in our response letter to the engineer.
Well, I didn't hear, I didn't hear it answered, Rich.
Okay, well, that is the answer, but we're just deferring it to the point of when the site's at its, at the rough grade, then we'll be doing soil testing in each of the detention basins.
And the per yard?
Oh, that would be those guys to answer that one.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't have an opportunity to put together a package timely enough to address that particular issue, but Mr. Spencer, as part of this particular project and his reinvestment in the community, is willing to make that 10 cent donation if this project gets approved under the terms and conditions that we've submitted. So we have it.
So that is definite, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask either Robin or Lee, most likely Robin, to read back the conditions now that we have added to what we have in our packet.
Thank you, Brigitta. Yes, the memo that you have in your packet has not, had not been updated for tonight. Had not been updated for tonight, so you don't have those conditions, but I will read those into the record. So the first one regarding the landscaping final plan shall include the white pines along Route 3 with a 6-inch diameter at the breast height and sup-
6 inches phenomenal. 6 inch?
6 inch caliber?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what was requested tonight.
That's a frank.
6 inches, I don't even know if you can get that.
Because I was going to say, if feasible, because I know from John Henson in Landscape Arctic, so it's not always easy to get them.
I don't know if you can purchase a 6-inch caliber.
Okay.
3.
3.
3 to 4.
3 to 4. Those 3, okay. That's what they have already. So they've already done the supplemental planting plan with adding these shrubs in the dense understory to the plan that they proposed already. The one thing we can add to that is to extend where the existing berm is to make the berm consistent along the highway with the landscaping. We have our standard lighting is to comply with the prevention of light pollution zoning bylaw. We have our standard prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, a registered professional engineer must certify that the drainage systems, driveways, curbing, and parking areas will be installed according to accepted practices and in compliance with the zoning bylaw and approved site plans. Then we have several, then we have the, several of the ones that have to do with gravel removal with the overburden shall be stripped with topsoil and subsoil stored separately on site and ceded to prevent erosion for the use of restoration of the site. A minimum of 6 inches of topsoil shall be placed on areas designated to be restored to the natural state, such as side slopes, open space, and areas that are not otherwise improved. All areas of excavation and accessways to earth removal operations shall be clearly marked with legally posted no trespassing signs. Areas of steep slope or grade, as judged by the permit granting authority, the building commissioner for zoning permits in Section 3, and the zoning board of appeals for special permits in Section 4 shall additionally be fenced and clearly marked danger keepout every 150 feet. The final plans I have, shall show a reduction in parking to 234 spaces, which is the 33% reduction as allowed under the Unified Complex. The earth removal from the site is limited to one or two years. Talking tonight about the timing of that, we wanted to put a timing on that, and that needs to be determined tonight, if it's one year or is it going to be two years?
Hours of operation for gravel removal has to be incorporated into any type of decision there. Dust control.
Yep.
Hours of operation.
Yeah, hours of operation, dust control, the routing. We've got the truck routing route, so we've got that. We've also got, the petitioner shall provide a bond to restore the site if the build-out is not constructed, constructed within three years. The plans to include state-of-the-art onsite recharge systems such as rain gardens, et cetera, incorporated into the stormwater design.
Testing?
And the testing of soils shall be, is deferred, but shall be provided on site at rough, at rough grade. And 10 cents a cubic yard will be donated to the town for the removal of the gravel removal. Solar, we got the solar, oh, a bond for the solar panels. I don't have the language for that. Bond for the solar panels. I think that's it.
We were going to look into a maximum of the park spaces removed, see if that's permissible under the building commissioner, to exceed the 33%.
With the building commissioner about that, and in the interim right now, I just, I've put in the maximum possible right now, but we'll find out if we can reduce that even further.
Yeah, I think the question remains one year, two year, if you want to subtract.
One year is not long enough to remove all that.
So two years.
Two years.
So then we'd have two years on that.
The berm, Robin, that we're talking about, the berm, we should add a specific height on a specific elevation of that. It was just to mark the view of traffic, so there should be a specific elevation all along that actually does that.
Do you have a suggestion for a minimum height?
Since the elevation changes, I think maybe we can make the reference based upon the height at Route 3, so you keep a certain elevation above that. Above Route 3.
The berms that are on, that are adjacent to the highway right now are approximately 4 to 5 feet, so the idea was to just kind of match that along that fence line.
So it would be 4 to 5 feet from the elevation of Route 3.
That's 4 to 5 feet of the elevation at Route 3, above the elevation of Route 3.
Is that sufficient?
That's, that's-
Malcolm?
I would think it would be more than that. I would think about 6, 7 feet would be a sufficient elevation above the surface of the highway all along the property boundary, if it can be done and maintain the same elevation of the excavation, on the same slope of the excavation. Have to look at, do some analysis to figure that out.
And Malcolm's saying 7? Fighting now, fighting now. It varies.
It varies.
It's not a level elevation, it's about 4 to 5 feet.
You don't want it to be, you want it to be undulating so it looks like natural terrain versus-
You think 4 to 7?
Yeah, vary.
4 to 7.
Varying 4 to 7.
So Malcolm, we're talking about varied from a height of 4 to 7 to give it some, a little bit more of a natural look versus just a 7-foot wall?
Okay, that's fine, but 4 foot all along is not sufficient, I don't think, to do the job that we want done with it.
So staff would work on the conditions as far as the gravel removal would be concerned? Timing?
Yes.
No standing vehicles, no vehicles started at certain times, but you know, that-
Yep, the standard, yep.
The standard. To protect the roads, we got that with the 10 cents.
Yep.
Got it, okay.
All needed pieces in the plantings?
Yes.
Okay, so the vote is to, two votes, Lee, or is it one?
I'll be wondering. Can a berm and time that is, well, it's two votes, so.
So the vote, my motion is to support the building commissioner's determination that the gravel removal is ancillary to the project. That's my motion.
Action.
Do you want to do that now when we don't have all the conditions actually in front of us?
Well, she just, she just read them off. Robin just read the conditions off, right?
Yeah, okay.
So they're in the decision.
Do we have a second? In favor? Brigitta?
Yes.
Tim?
What's that?
Paul?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Malcolm? Yes. Tim? Are you there?
Yes.
Yes, okay. It's unanimous.
Second motion needed, that we need. Move to approve the site plan? Move to approve the site plan with the conditions and staff's report.
Second.
Okay. In favor, Brigitta?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Tim?
Paul?
Malcolm, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is an appointment to the planning board representative, the planning board representative to the master plant task force. Do we have any interest in anybody on the planning board to be on that task?
Mr. Chairman, I'm interested as well. So we only have one member?
No, Frank wanted it as well.
No, we only have one member for this committee? It's our committee. It's our committee.
The way we've constructed this task group, it's actually the Comprehensive Master Plan Task Group. The committee itself will follow after the task group has finished its duties, and there's one member of the Planning Board, there's one member of the Committee of Precinct Chairs, and there's one member of FinCom that will be the board members that will be part of this task group. So yes, we have one member of the Planning Board. The task group is required to obviously report back to the Planning Board as it's doing its work.
Okay, so we have two contenders.
Do we have any... I can hear you.
So Frank and Steve are interested?
I'll make a motion to support Steve to that committee.
We have him on, second?
Who's second?
In favor, Brigitta?
I'm in favor of Steve.
Paul?
I'm in favor of Steve.
Tim?
Yes. That's a yes for Steve.
Yes for Steve. I'm in favor of Steve. Frank?
Well, I will make it unanimous.
That's kind of you.
Thank you very much.
Kind of you.
Do you have a business?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to just make, just a quick statement, somewhat of a statement. So our board member, Mr. Mann, presented us with something this evening called a point system, and I'm not familiar with the point system, and it has not yet been presented to the board. I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. I was a little concerned that some of the rationale for what we were voting on had to do with the point system without us having actually been introduced to it or have any idea what it meant. So I really had to refrain from those parts of the argument, but I'm looking forward to the time when we learn more about evaluating construction or development through a point system that Mr. Mann is going to bring to us. So thank you for all those efforts, and I look forward to hearing more about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before we go on with Lee's, I have one thing that I'd like to bring up, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Under other business.
Right.
I'm in receipt of a email or a letter from a Planning Board member requesting that the town planner recuse himself from future Planning Board meetings and/or anything to do with Spencer Realty. And it's signed by Mr. Mann, member of the Planning Board. And I would be okay with this letter if it said citizen of Plymouth, but when it states member of the Planning Board or represents and gives the appearance that the rest of the members on the Planning Board agree with the letter that went out to the sitting Planning Director and acting Town Manager. So I think we need to, even though I think it's, again, okay if it was sent as a citizen of the town of Plymouth, I think it's imperative this board works together before any letters go out to any entity, whether it be the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, Committee of Precinct Chairs, Village Steering Committees. We're not in the habit of sending out letters asking for people to recuse themselves from certain things that go on within the Planning Board or any other things that happen within this town. So I think we need to do something along the lines of ensuring any letters that go out from any particular member are approved by the members of the Planning Board. If you want to send a letter out with an opinion based on any subject whatsoever, you do it as a citizen. But certainly, the whole board wasn't aware of this letter going out or email going out. So I'd like to bring that up for discussion this evening before I go home, and I know it's late, and we can bring it up at a further meeting and discuss how we should approach, how we send letters out individually as a board.
If I could too, I wasn't going to say anything, but I've served this town for over 30 years in a range of capacities, on a range of very difficult issues, various different stakeholders, representing the town, representing neighbors, abudders, opponents, supporters, and it is a little disappointing to me to actually have somebody imply somehow that there is some conflict for me to do this. I work for the Planning Board, I work for the Board of Selectmen, I work for opponents, I work for supporters. I view my job as a mediator more than it is anything else, and it, there is nothing further from the truth, and I did find it very disappointing.
As did I when, as did I when I read it. So I would ask the chairman, may he put something on the agenda that we have a little future discussion on that particular item? That may be looking at parliamentary procedure as it reverts to our future meetings, whether that be the adoption of Robert's Rules or something along the lines. We need to start working together as a board and start acting professionally and start running professional meetings. That's my opining for this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can briefly speak, I've known Lee Hartman for over 20 years. I have never met anyone that's more professional than Lee. He's served the Planning Board in the town of Plymouth without any self thought or any consideration for himself. He does what he believes the Planning Board and what he believes the town is doing. So thank you very much, Mr. Hartman. You have done a great job for over 20 years. Thank you very much.
Put that on the agenda for meeting for further discussion.
Thank you.
So we have a lot release for one lot on Wadsworth Estates. They've done a bunch of work. We're holding security in the form of 175,000 to finish the work. The asphalt is all in, all the paving's in, they've got some sidewalk and landscaping to do, but again, we have adequate money and we recommend the release of the one lot, Lot 5231.
Second.
If a motion may be second, in favor of Frank?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Brigitta?
Yes.
Tim? Tim? Malcolm? Yes. It's released. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing back the discussion regarding Mr. Hartman's interactions with the board, and with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion?
Second.
Third.
In favor, signify, waving your hand. All right. Night, all.
Good night.